Important for the public to understand that nobody that was working in the cannabis division at the time that this situation happened, if my understanding is correct, is working there now.
To my understanding, I don't, I don't quite know.
And this was, I'm sure to each of us, provided a little heartburn.
Yes.
And discouraging, but there's no other way to handle it than what we are doing. But I think to, in my mind, that gives a little more peace.
Yes.
If to others and wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that.
Yes.
I think the updates were, were good and needed. When you have a thousand things to do in office, sometimes little things slip through.
Yes.
But this was one of them and they've been corrected. And I think the policy moving forward will be great.
Great, thank you.
Any other on the board?
No questions.
Right, well, thanks.
Do you have any public comment? On Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
Take a roll call count.
I move to approve as presented.
One second.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
We will move on to E3. What are supervisors, receive an update from the County, Trinity County Tourism Ad Hoc Committee. Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Yes, so the backup materials cover a lot of this, but basically we received nine applications for the seventy, up to seventy thousand dollars that was set aside by the board. When the ad hoc committee received those, we went through a review process and a rating process. We looked at combined ratings to see where we were coming out on those. There was some, I think, pretty good consistency about how various committee members felt about the various applications. But we then had a conversation which was focused a lot on trying to move toward a more cohesive and unified and impactful use of these funds. And felt that, you know, we were still stuck in this, it's a little bit like Groundhog Day. We keep just getting the same thing where we keep getting disparate applications for funding, a good portion of that funding actually to put on events, not to promote events. And and so we felt that perhaps it would be best, one, to have a group that I had met with as part of my work on the the T-Bid initiative, that is a digital agency that works with many jurisdictions and solely on tourism, including some of our sister counties around here, and hear from them about what they could do for us in, in creating a digital marketing strategy. And then also have more time to go back to some of these groups that we feel like could, could benefit, it could be appropriate to provide funding to, but not with the information that we received. We tried to have a good template, but the ways in which that questions were answered just didn't leave enough information to feel like we were making good, informed decisions about how we use county funds. And so the proposal is to have that digital agency come back and make a presentation at the next board meeting and for us to use the time between now and then to reach out to the groups that we feel we need more information from and set up some individualized interactions so that we can ask more questions, get more information. One other thing that came up since then is that the, we, we received from the digital agency a sample strategy. So it wasn't our strategy, but it was a sample strategy because I said, well, you know, what, what would we get for seventy five hundred dollars? That's a lot of money. What are we going to get for that? And so they shared a sample strategy and I was able to share that with, of course, the committee members, but also with the Trinity Chamber folks, because I was looking back to when we had awarded the hundred thousand plus so they could hire professionals and, and kind of take the same step and wondering, do they have something similar? And Wayne Agner, was it yesterday, got back to us and, and gave a, a good update that, that explained a lot of similarities between something that has been developed within their organization through the use of county funds, similar to what we might get from that digital agency. So I sent a response back saying, thanks, can you share it so that we can have that? Because again, one of the things we're looking at is besides trying to make good, informed decisions that if we're going to continue to provide funding, that it's impactful and measurable and that it's getting used in the best way, not just the ways that we've always used it. And so that's kind of where we were left off. And so the recommendation is basically to put that digital agency on the agenda. We could also perhaps make time for the Trinity Chamber to present what they already have, since we're going to be hearing from one. And then also for us to have that additional time to, to go back and work with the groups that we think we need more information from before we make our recommendations to the board. So at this point, not recommending allocation of any funds.
Okay, so for clarity, would you like us to go back district by district? The people who have presented something from my district or your district and others, talk to them? Would you like to bring it back on the eighteenth?
No, we, well, what, what the committee is suggesting is that the committee meets with those folks to ask more questions so that we can bring recommendations to the board on the eighteenth. But I don't think we need presentations from all those entities.
No, I would just ask, if, if as a supervisor, should we go and talk to those people and see what, what they are presenting and find out what's coming?
That would probably get to be a brown act concern because Supervisor Cox and I are already going to be meeting with all of them.
Okay, fair enough.
So we've already, in fact, Supervisor Cox and I both have already reached out to some of them.
And you.
As part of this process and, and we'll do some more.
That's true.
So yeah, I don't think at this point that would be helpful or appropriate.
So your motion would be?
So the, the motion I think as listed is, is something to the effect of, don't award any funds now, schedule a presentation at the next meeting and allow this additional time for the committee members to reach out to those individual organizations for more data to, to feed into our recommendations. And we have all committee members here, if people have questions, you don't need to just ask them of me. Or if anybody wants to make other comments, to explain our position at this point.
We'll take public comment in the room now. Veronica, good morning.
The eyeballs going. Veronica Kelly Albes, volunteer from Douglas City. Good morning supervisors. I'm here today as a resident and volunteer. I am not speaking on behalf of any organization. I am simply sharing my point of view from a volunteer perspective. I'm a volunteer for the Trinity County Chamber of Commerce and also serve on their marketing committee. I am disappointed that the committee couldn't find enough value in applications submitted by historical TOT funded groups. These groups are run and supported by hours and hours of volunteers that bring their individual expertise to the table. Submissions by these groups, I imagine, are all within the bounds of the seventy thousand dollars we were instructed to work with in planning. If there is more money to be considered, I bet every group would provide a strong, robust and well-funded submission to the committee. If one applicant is allowed to do a presentation to the BOS for funding, then all should have the same opportunity. I struggle with the idea of spending even more of our county money on out of state companies that offer to do work that could be done locally with more money. We seem to continue funding outside companies that work until the money runs out and they walk away. Historically, with little return on the investment and/or with no one to take up the mantle of the program. Your historical TOT funded partners have continued to work at all times. This company that may be allowed to present their application will be using the money for paid staff, funding for content and content distribution. I am confident their presentation prepared by paid staff will be slick, professional, and look amazing. I also suspect the request for presentation is to test the waters to see if the board will entertain spending more than the allocated seventy thousand dollars. How will they obtain local information, local content and boots on the ground support? Who within the county will be paid to help them? They could possibly, possibly pay some of the local organizations to use their channels and content built over the many years. How much would that cost? As a volunteer that has seen at least one of the applications, I know a plan was submitted that offers most of what six digital, two six digital does, with the limitation of staying within the budget amount we thought we had to honor and expect. I know that strong data was submitted to show progress and accountability for money spent on tourism marketing. The data and metrics submitted showed growth and with more money, we could reach higher impacts. But we are told no more money is available and we need to respect that. So volunteers come together and make it all work, some spending their own money to make things work. Because we believe in and love Trinity County, we have the reason or we have the passion to market our county, not only because we love it, but because we know it. It seems a bit disrespectful from my perspective, from any individual volunteer perspective, to now want to allow only one application, one that has paid staff to do the work that most have already been working on, to do a presentation to the BOS. If you want more, then we need more. We could do, we could have a staff of graphic designers, digital content creators, digital and broadcast marketing, and marketing planners. I would like to request that if you decide to allow one applicant presentation, all should be allowed that same opportunity. I am happy to hear from Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Veronica, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any other public comment in the room? Travis, good afternoon.
Travis Finch, good morning supervisors. Supervisor Lou Wiler mentioned something about measurable results. Just what are the results that are being looked for? I have volunteered for some of the same organizations that Veronica has and we have asked on several occasions for information to try to be able to quantify what measurable results are. You know, we, we get three hundred thousand dollars per year in TOT tax revenue. Are we even able to move the needle significantly enough if, if we're given additional funding? Historically, we have had to share approximately forty thousand dollars amongst all of these organizations. Twenty-five of the seventy thousand for years went to the museum. So you mentioned earlier something from the Sheriff's Department about, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, we ask a lot of these volunteers and I agree with Veronica that a lot of their work goes unrecognized and I think it would be a mistake to not fund any of these organizations because those events that are being put on, they do bring revenue into the county and all I have to say, thank you.
Travis, thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Drew, good afternoon.
Good day, Chair Supervisors, Drew Plobani. Hey, Fork, I'm also on the Tourism Funding Ad Hoc Committee. I just wanted to highlight some of what's also contained in the staff report related to the potential opportunity to gain matching grant funds from Visit California. From my perspective, in terms of tourism marketing, it would be sensible to try and pursue that opportunity, to double the amount of funds we have available to, you know, support tourism marketing. And that also, again, from my perspective, we could certainly, I think, steward more collaborative endeavors in terms of the various organizations that have submitted applications and tried to come up with a cohesive plan to encourage them to use customer generated content, you know, that's free content that individuals visiting Trinity County are putting out there on social media and, and just basically multiply, you know, the amount of impressions that we get, you know, that are done through digital marketing by creating a more clear, collaborative, cohesive approach to tourism marketing. Thanks.
Drew, thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Sir, good afternoon.
I wasn't going to comment, but my, my concern is that if you don't give money to these groups who set off the events that you're talking about, then there's no reason to advertise we don't have the events. So, I mean, we're coming up, we're coming up to 250th anniversary of the United States for the Fourth of July next year. If we don't have a Fourth of July next year because you're not giving us money, then why have it?
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Good morning.
I'm Susan Marie. I'm not wearing my director's hat at the Highland Arts Center, but I am a concerned volunteer. You would not believe the effort that it takes to do the things that are done by the visitor's center, the chambers, I mean, all of us, at least at the Highland Arts Center. We're in a little different situation. Some of the people on my team are paid. But what I have to say is that it would completely deflate the effort if we were to not receive funding across all the organizations. The most tangible evidence of success, I, I think, can be found in our events and particularly in the visitor's center. Now, the Snyder Highland Foundation invested in the building that houses the visitor's center because we believe in the work of the visitor's center. We believe in the work of having people on the ground to greet tourists. That is the most tangible thing happening, in my opinion. I work the desk at the Highland Arts Center over weekends during the week, not every single day, but I work it. And a lot of tourists come in and they were inspired to come over because the visitor's center referred them. So there's a lot going on that you don't see, that you can't really quantify, but I can tell you that if no funding would come out to the organizations, and I don't know all of who's applied, but the ones that have traditionally applied and received funds, if that funding was not to come, I, I really fear for the future of volunteerism. I think it would be the single most deflating act that could possibly happen. I also do have a long career in the direct marketing field. I've worked with ad agencies and, you know, consultants are great, but we've, we've seen a track record of consultants coming in and not fulfilling their pledge and their promise. So I also worry about that. And if we are going to allow one group to present to this board, we should allow everyone. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. Any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Ben Kellogg?
Good morning, Board Chair and Staff again, Ben Kellogg. We will, like others, I 100% agree with the statements previously. I am not speaking on behalf of any entity or volunteer organization. I am speaking as a citizen. We're told to shop local, buy local, but when it comes down to it, we're, this county has ran on contractors, vendors, when we could be hiring locals to do this, do these jobs, these positions, these projects. And if we don't hire, then give them to the volunteers that are the backbone of this county. It's a slap in the face, I agree, to bring in a vendor to the Board of Supervisors to make a presentation when there are so many wonderful volunteer organizations that do this within our county, that prop up this county from tourism perspective and, and events perspective, year after year after year after year. We need to turn it around, the way that we look at how we get things done in this county. We all say we're poor, we don't have money, but then we pay these high priced contracting agencies. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom?
I show no other raised hands.
Bring it back to the board, Rick.
Yeah, I definitely have more that I'd like to say, but I also, Supervisor Cox, would you like to weigh in here before I do?
Go ahead.
Well, I think it is interesting to me. One of the things that always happens and we can't help it, is we, we filter things and we apply what we believe the words mean to an outcome. And it's clear to me that the belief is, from what was read, even though it says, don't award money now, talk to the people that sent their applications in and get a presentation from this digital agency. Somehow that translated into, we want to give all the money to this outside agency and more. And that was never a conversation that the committee had. What we focused on in large part is that somewhat recently, we awarded over a hundred thousand dollars in the belief that it would lead to a professionally led, because we kept hearing about the strains on volunteers, a professionally led effort that would represent all of county. And here we sit again, and all these separate entities are coming for money to do their own thing, promote their own way, promote their own stuff. And when the reason that we're looking to have this professional agency come in is because we have not been presented with a cohesive marketing strategy to drive tourism in Trinity County. Now, I'm hearing from Wayne that perhaps there is one that hasn't been shared with us. And so if I receive it, I will forward it to two six digital and say, would this be a waste of your time because you've already, we've already got everything we need? And then I would want that information shared with all these other agencies and then I'd want to come back to the point of saying, so why, if we have this shared cohesive strategy of the most impactful way, we can spend very limited funds to drive tourism in Trinity County, do we have nine groups coming separately with no cohesive approach to this? And I hear the part about emotional impact and I get it. What I feel like is missing in that interpretation is, the whole focus of this committee is, how can we have the greatest impact on tourism and businesses in Trinity County? And if I'm a volunteer of an organization putting on an event and money that has been spent in the past can bring more people to my event and make it a bigger, better event, I would think I would be happy about that. And I cannot worry about having to learn and apply digital marketing strategies that I'm never going to be as good at as an agency that does it all day long specifically for tourism across local jurisdictions everywhere. I'm never going to be that good. And so if they can have a bigger impact with those funds and I benefit from it because my organization is putting on these events, that should be, in my mind, a good thing. But I'm looking at it as, again, I come from corporate America where we would make these decisions all the time. It's like, it's not personal, it is what will make the biggest impact. And I care a lot about culture and the organizations I lead and, and the impact on people, but also am always looking for what's the greatest impact. I also heard, you know, the comment about lack of funding and if we don't fund these events, they won't happen. We had an ask, I think it was for fifteen thousand dollars for fireworks in Weaverville. Lewiston, a community a third the size, puts on a nine thousand dollar fireworks display with no, no money from the county. So I struggle that we say, oh, well, we can't possibly do these things if you don't give us this money. It won't happen. Well, if it doesn't happen, why? If a, if a community of a thousand can pull together an event that has a nine thousand dollar fireworks display and sandal riding across the beach and all these kinds of things, and they can do that without asking for any county funds, why can't the county seat, largest community and its surrounding partners do the same thing? So I, again, I am, I am in a place where I am trying to look at, one, we didn't say we would award this funds. When the board voted on this, we didn't say we would award the funds, we said we would set them aside so that if we felt like it was the best thing to do with seventy thousand, because it, you know, hear from our planning commissioner, we could spend it on roads. We could spend it on personnel, we could spend it on a lot of different things, but if we're going to spend it, it's there. Then it's like, well, what is the best use of those funds? And it isn't always the way you've always done it. And I think the, again, to me, and I'll pause for others, but I just feel like we are literally in Groundhog Day. Every year, here's, give me a little bit more money so I can keep putting on events that others can fund by themselves. Let me keep spending money that is the way I think I should spend it, but I must not be really reaching out to the other groups because they feel like they need to ask for their own money to promote their own events. So it truly isn't a cohesive thing that we thought we were funding. And so hurt feelings or not, what I'm trying to do is make the best use of our county funds to drive tourism, support our local businesses, and help this county thrive. And if that causes discontent, I can live with that.
Supervisor Cox?
I agree with everything that I have heard from Supervisor Lou Wiler. I would put in a couple of pieces of perspective, was maybe, it's probably up to fifteen or twenty years ago that there was a gentleman that came in, and I think he was from Nevada, and he did a presentation and in, in the PowerPoint truly looked like he had probably presented that to multiple jurisdictions and just changed Trinity County and Weaverville for the county and city that he had last presented to. Came in on a big motorcycle, picked up a check and left with a lot of promises and very little return. And I think that that, at least for those of us who recall that situation, left a rather sore feeling in our stomachs over money that we had spent. And so I do hear the voices of the volunteers who work so hard and say, but we are the ones that live here and are invested in care. Please don't give that money to an outside jurisdiction who may, you know, have a repeat performance. That said, I've been working for five years with TOT partners and I am personally, I'm, I'm exhausted of way I think Supervisor Lou Wiler is well stating as kind of a Groundhog Day experience where we just continue to have people come and pitch their ideas and it feels like, you know, how to divide it up and make all of the, all of the folks happy. When making people happy isn't the outcome that we're looking for, results is the outcome we're looking for. And nowhere, it breaks my heart to hear people say, well, it feels like a slap in the face when the intention is, how can we use this funding in a way that frees you up to do those things that you do so well? Because for resources that if strategized well could be doubled in a, in a matching fund situation. Drew didn't talk yet, and perhaps he would like to, about an emeritus planning program where folks for free would offer some assistance. And then I would also like to revisit that last year, we spent an incredible amount of time and effort, I did, on three neighboring county professionals who have seen enormous return on investment and shared with us the results that they got and how they got it by how they focused the attention of the funding that they did have. And then they applied that toward, if you were our jurisdiction size, in our space and time with the funding that we have, here is what we would most recommend in what order, in order to see yourselves on a track toward return investment over what you have done. And so in my mind, I'm working to incorporate those things that were recommended into what I am very interested to hear what this presentation would include. And I think that to, to write it off before we've heard it or to make it a presumption that, well, they just want to take all the money away from us and go throw it over here, please do not take that as your, as your takeaway. But let's continue, is my recommendation and support with a continued open mind. We have a little bit more to look at so that we can do the best we can with what we have and free up to best support our very appreciated, hardworking volunteers who, yes, you live here and you care. That is, that is the goal from my, from my perspective.
I would, I would agree, if you mess Jill's and Rick's comments together, I think we come up with a pretty well-rounded solution to this. It may give some people some heartburn, maybe not. But we have to, we have to move forward with the best thing we can for this county and I think. And I think that you've got some good opportunities. We'll talk to Wayne, see what he has to say. Maybe he can, you know, be unbelievably beneficial to what we're doing here. We're not sure yet. You know, we certainly don't want to hurt our volunteers or hurt anything that we're doing, but, you know, we have to open our avenues up to different possibilities. So I do agree with the two comments that I've heard so far.
I would like to get some feedback from the rest of the board about the, you know, heard concern from public comments that if we're going to let this group present versus the other. Again, my intention here was, this board, or at least this entity, it always, isn't always the same people, has seen these same kinds of presentations over and over and over again from our local groups. And again, as has been said, so appreciative of everything that they've done because there's so much that happens that wouldn't without them. But what we have never seen is what we would see from this digital agency. So that was my whole point, was just say, "Hey, let's be, we see all this. We know we can give the money this way. We've done it for decades. Now, let's see what we could do that wouldn't be different." But if the board would like to honor what they're hearing from the public comment and say, "Well, okay, but if we're hearing from them, we should let all these other groups come present," I don't, I'm not opposed to it. I just felt that you had charged the ad hoc committee with making those informed decisions. We've already reviewed the applications ourselves. We ranked and rated them. We scored them. We met and talked for an hour and a half to two hours about them, and we thought about what we want to go back and ask them for, which would be much more detailed than we'll have time for in this meeting. But if the people that represent those groups feel like they'd be shorted if they weren't presented, and they've done a lot of great work over many, many years to hold us up, not hold us up this way, not hold us up in a bad way, then, again, I have no problem with it. I just want you to understand why we were coming at it the way we were coming at it. I'm completely open personally to however you think is best.
May I make a comment? Yep, I don't want to underestimate the power of volunteers in a community that's been here for years and years and years. That, that is the powerhouse. I think it does a better job than anybody on the outside can. I appreciate all the work with ad hocs. I really absolutely do. My, I really don't like hiring out consultants if we don't have to, but I understand what you're trying to get done, a professional company that does. I just think that volunteers in our own communities know best how to spend that money and get the biggest bang in tourism we can get. They're, they're the feet on the ground. So that's just my opinion, and I'm not opposed to, I'm not solid on, you know, making any kind of judgment, but that's just my five cents.
Thank you.
I have something to add.
Go ahead.
I, I also hear in this conversation that if we do receive a presentation from this company, it doesn't mean that we have to make a decision for them. It would just be an opportunity for us and the public to see what is, what is a potential tool that could be used. I, I absolutely am a volunteer myself and put on events, and I understand that we know a lot. But one of the things I have learned in the process of being an event coordinator and planner and cleaner-upper and everything it takes to do all of those types of things, hustling folks for donations, is sometimes I run across people who can do something better than me and do it for me. And, and I always reluctant at times to, to let go of that control and let go of, of what's something that really, really matters to me and my heart, super important. And, and I know my community, and I know the culture of my community, and, and it's hard to grab a hold of that idea that someone might be able to really transfer the essence of what we live and breathe out to the world if they're not super familiar with who we are. But I also recognize that sometimes, because we all see things through our own perceptions, we, we all live everything through our own perceptions. And sometimes it's good to have people observe, and they see things about us and our community that maybe we just don't recognize or took for granted, but really to someone else it's super unique. And advertising that is an opportunity for people and us to see things. I picked up one of the Trinity magazines when I was sitting in hunting camp and learned so much about what is available in our county that I didn't know, yet I've lived here my whole life. And so to be able to expand that out into the world would be great. I was ziplining last November in Whitesburg, Georgia, and someone asked us where we were from, and I said Trinity County. And they said, "Hey, we saw something on Facebook about that place, and we want to go hiking there. Where can I find out more information about the county as a whole?" And so it does reach across great, vast landscapes. And I think that it would be good to hear and see what they have to offer. We don't have to agree to it, but we would, maybe it would be something that I believe would, would provoke thought and give us opportunities to use new tools as well as respect the legacy of the volunteers and the, and the, and the systems and structures that are currently in place. Thank you.
I would like to add one more comment, if I could. And that is that I am in no way interested in having all of the presenters that turned in their, their applications, if you will, I don't know what to call them, come and do this. That's the reason for an ad hoc, is to move things along productively. We chew up a lot of board time, which doesn't matter, but we chew up a lot of staff time, which absolutely does matter when we do that. And we have the information and we have the ability to sit down and ask the further questions. So if it gives grievance to those who would say, "Well, if you're going to hear from this other group," then perhaps the solution is we have them turn, that if there's an additional presentation that thinks it can run some sort of competition with what we're going to hear presented to us, maybe that gets then just submitted for ad hoc review.
Separate from the one-on-one meetings, the committee meeting with them? You're saying they could submit a presentation?
I'm saying they could submit a presentation to the ad hoc, separate from coming and hearing and doing a presentation to the board, because that gives the other groups the feeling that, "Well, we didn't get to present to the board." So we wouldn't prefer that.
And I would, I would just clarify too, just set expectations. Again, the, to me, I see what we were proposing for next time with meeting with 26 Digital, highly recommended by our peer counties who've done this, is educational. If we even decided that some of the 70,000 would go towards funding them, then it would be a first quarter project. They said it would take 45 days, so it would be April before we even had anything to act on from them. And, and then you're out of the fiscal year in three months. So it's not like this was, "Oh, let's hurry, rush them and get them approved, give them all the money, let's do this." Again, that was never part of what the committee was discussing. This is simply trying to educate ourselves about what could be versus what we're used to. And I will comment, Supervisor Brownfield, I completely agree with you in the sense of our local volunteers know better than anybody possibly could from the outside about how to do an event that works for our world here. I would question that there's anyone in Trinity County that knows as much about how to squeak every benefit out of a penny of digital marketing than would exist in this organization that does it for dozens of jurisdictions, day in and day out. They know how to spend the money, where to spend the money, how to leverage connections, how to leverage relationships, how to get into things that, that we don't even know exist. And that's not putting down anybody here. This is just what they do for a living. But they could, you know, if you ask them to come in and plan our Fourth of July festivities in Weaverville, I bet nobody would like what they came up with. So it's just two different things. So I, I'm hearing Supervisor Cox say, leave the presentation just to that one entity understanding why we're trying to do it. But again, we need a motion at some point to either support what was recommended, which is just the single presentation and time for us to, the ad hoc committee, to meet with these local entities for more detail. And then at the meeting, we would be making recommendations.
When do we pull on Wayne's knowledge into this?
You're asking, when do we, well, so what Wayne had provided was a summary and comparison of how, what he saw in the sample strategy from 26 Digital aligned with what they have pulled together from, I'm not sure what, you know, from working with various professionals and so forth. And, but we haven't seen it. So I'm, I'm suggesting, and have already asked, that that be shared so that the committee can review it. We could potentially have a conversation with 26 Digital and, and again, if it looks like they're pretty darn similar and we don't need to invest any more money there, and we can just start to consider implementing more funds along that cohesive digital marketing strategy. If a committee feels that's the best use of funds, then we could do that. But, yeah, I certainly, there's no point in spending money with somebody else to create something we already have.
Absolutely. That's what I wanted to make sure we incorporated Wayne and his free knowledge.
Well, free that the county paid for, what, $100 and plus thousand, two years ago.
But it's just, all right. So did you want to make a motion or keep it the same as it was?
I'll move to approve it as it's been presented, which is presentation from 26 Digital, time for the ad hoc to reach out to these local groups, gather more information, and make recommendations.
I will second.
At the next meeting.
I will second.
At the 18th?
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lou Weller?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Coak?
Aye. Okay, we will move into, oh, we move into closed session. Our report out. Well, the folks that are leaving leave. Lisa, you're the only one standing? Go ahead. Let these guys go here. Terry, thank you very much. Okay, our report out on court, closed session from our last meeting. F1, Government Code 54954.5, Labor Negotiations, direction was given. F2, Government Code Section F4, excuse me, 54954.5C, Conference of Legal Counsel. No reportable action at this time. F3, Government Code Section F4954.5E, Public Employee Appointment, direction was given. We are now adjourned. A public comment, go ahead. Okay, we have two closed session items coming up. Number one, F1, Human Resources, Government Code Section 54954.5E, Public Employee Appointment, Internet County Clerk, Recorder, Assessor, and Register of Voters. And F2, Human Resources, Government Code Section 54954.5E, Public Employee Appointment, County Administrative Officer. Lisa, go right ahead.
Excuse me, good morning, Lisa Wright-Lewiston. Just a question on, wow, I don't know what happened to my voice all of a sudden. Just a question on the, the second item. The staff report says NA, but you're saying appoint a CAO, which we already have a CAO. So it leads to a little bit of confusion in terms of what would be the intent of a closed session on that particular item? If there's more transparency that you can provide, or if you're applying to, when you report out and say, "Action taken or direction given," that's just very vague, right? So it's very, it's just a question, why are we talking about appoint a CAO when we have a CAO? Is there anything more you could give on that before going to closed session? Would be appreciated. And then if you do in your report outs, provide some more information besides direction given, to whom, and next steps, and that kind of thing. Just in overall, you know, we'd like to see more transparency.
Yeah, right now, I think we will report out on this next time than information given this time. Thank you. We are now adjourned.
We do have public comment on, oh.
What'd you do? Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, Ben Kellogg?
Hi there. Lisa stole my thunder. I was going to ask about the same thing. Are we appointing a new CAO? Is Trent retiring? A little more clarity, a little more information, then this would be extremely helpful and appreciated. Thanks, have a good weekend.
Thank you. Good weekend. All righty. We are now adjourned. It's almost the weekend according to Ben.